The conference has been unmuted. The conference has been muted. The conference has The conference has been muted.
Yeah, they
By eight o'clock every morning, I was getting those like, we're starting home at five thirty, it's like, wow, where did they go?
It's like that, I know, it's disturbing. But we are.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and people out there watching our virtual town hall meeting. I'm Sal Panto, the mayor of the city of Easton, I'd like to introduce Louis Campos will be with me today in the flesh. Our city administrator, as well as Frank Caruso, our IT director, and Mark Lisinecki, our director of finance. Our other directors are on the line, as well as city controller Chris Hegel, council members Dave O'Connell, Ken Brown, Sandy Volcano, and Jim Ettinger. And I'm not sure if the others are on or not, but they did get it back to me. You're probably watching through our city website, which is www dot city, I'm sorry, www dot easton hyphen PA dot gov. But if you want to participate by calling in, asking a question, making a comment, the following number is the correct number. Four eight four three five nine zero three zero four. And when you're prompted to put the PIN number in, it's eight seven zero eight six one. Let me repeat all those numbers for you again. The call in number is four eight four three five nine zero three zero four. And the PIN number when prompted is eight seven zero eight six one. To unmute yourself, make sure you press the star star, which will, the asterisk asterisk, which will raise your hand on our software and let us know that you want to ask a question and we will get to you as, and the order that they come in. I've had several people question me from residents and employees about the status of the city budget and how it's been impacted. You've heard and read in the papers and on the TV that, you know, it's a five and a half million dollar loss in revenue. And let me say that these are challenging times for everyone. Those that are furloughed from their job, those that own a small business, those frontline workers in the grocery stores, pharmacies, and other essential businesses. And most importantly, to those working in our healthcare facilities, such as the hospitals, doctors offices, senior homes, our police, our fire, our emergency medical services, and those who work, as I said, in senior citizen facilities. Our short term focus in the east, in the city of Easton is always going to be on the health and safety of our residents. But while we're on the short term, we focus on the short term, we must plan for the long term impact that coronavirus or COVID nineteen will have on Easton. That planning has to do with what every other small business is doing in America. Developing a plan to fill the financial hole in the city's budget. During the last twelve years, we've worked hard to restore our economy and build our city back up from the throes of the flight to the suburbs in the sixties by our residents who wanted a home where they had some land. The big box stores, the malls, first the shopping centers, then the malls, the decrease in our population and the decrease in our number of buildings, which are tax ratables, and of course, the rise at the same time in crime and violent behavior. We came to Easton in night in two thousand eight, our administration with a platform of clean and safe. And we knew that to build our city, we first needed a place where people felt secure to live, to work, and to recreate. Just as we entered office, the city was also facing probably one of the worst things in the world, the Great Recession, the biggest recession since the Great Depression. And also, we were on the throes of Act forty seven, which is basically state bankruptcy with state oversight. But we were committed to our goals and we were resilient enough to come out of the recession better than we entered. And up to March tenth of this year, our economy was robust and growing. All that changed on March eleventh, when our country's economy came to a halt. I issued an emergency declaration on the nineteenth of March, which was ratified by city council on March twenty fifth. On March, on April third, less than two weeks, our administration placed more than thirty percent of our employees on furlough, if you don't count police and fire. If you do count police and fire, if you don't count police and fire, it's over fifty percent of our employees have been furloughed. For some cities, this challenge may be devastating. But for Easton, we'll come out of this stronger than we entered, and I look forward to that day when we're all back meeting and greeting each other in our neighborhood businesses and central business district. Many have asked how the city could experience more than five million dollars in lost revenues. It's a lot of money, obviously. As you know, we have not raised real estate taxes, sewer or trash removal in more than eleven years in spite of increased costs. We balance the city budget on our economic growth. The five primary revenue items that are related to the economy and that will hear, feel the biggest impact is first of all, the business privilege tax. More and more businesses and increased business, number of businesses in this city has grown that in double digit percentages. But now, most of them are either closed or have reduced business, even if they're essential, such as curbside restaurants. So that will go down. Amusement tax, paid by the attractions that now close, Crayola, State Theater, Signal Museum, and all the wonderful galleries that we have in the city that have opened up are now closed. They were, Crayola tells me when they were, they gave me a heads up a week before they closed, that there are double digit increases in attendance so far this year to date. Wind Creek is also closed, how does that impact Easton? Well, thanks to our lobbying efforts back in two thousand and eight, Easton receives a share of the table games, not the slot machines, but the table games. Unfortunately, the city wasn't at the table, no pun intended, when the slot machine for me was developed. So we get nothing from the slots, even though we're the county seat and in the same county, yep, the city of Allentown gets a large share of the, of the slots. But we do get about a million, over about a million one a year, so when you're looking at an average, it's over a hundred thousand dollars a month. And if we look at, the Wind Creek is paying, they furloughed their employees till the end of May. We could probably expect about a two hundred thousand dollar loss in that revenue alone. Parking revenues, I always hear about people wanting, and I, I get not upset, but I get, I guess I try to explain to residents that parking revenue is what has helped us keep real estate taxes, sewer fees, trash fees down for our residents. Parking fees make money for the city of Easton, I make no bones about that. Yes, they're a pain in the neck and people don't like to pay the meters, but they mostly, most of our meters are paid by visitors, not residents, coming to our city to go to our restaurants, go to our attractions, and they pay for parking. If it wasn't for parking revenues, the city of Easton's real estate taxes would probably have to go up about five mils. Five mils of taxes, do you want residents to pay it, or do you want the visitors coming from out of state to pay it, like to go to the Crayola factory or our state theater anywhere, or any of our restaurants downtown? Earned income tax is going to, the last one, it's going to take a big hit. Higher unemployment means less on real estate earned income tax. And lastly, the city of Easton collects more than eight million dollars in real estate taxes, and that sounds like a lot of money. But unfortunately, our police department, our fire department, which should be covered in the normal municipal finance one oh one by real estate taxes, that eight million dollars is pale in comparison to our expenses, which are for police and fire right now, over nineteen million dollars a year. So you could see that the economy is where we, we raised our revenues for our city. So let's review what we're doing to assist our residents, in case you didn't know. The filing of local two thousand nineteen earned income tax forms and payments to them without penalty, penalty has been extended from April fifteenth to July fifteenth. So you do not have to pay or file until then. That's the same day as your federal and state taxes as well. We're also support, to support our local businesses, the business privilege tax for last year doesn't have to be paid until August the first, two thousand and twenty. Twenty twenty real estate tax payments are extended to people, I mean, I'm sorry, to August the first, without penalty. City Hall continues to be closed, as well as other public buildings to the public. Yes, there's a skeleton crew in here working, but we are not available. We're advising most people, either, we would hope that they could pay online their, their taxes or their fees, or whatever they have to pay to the city. But that's up to them, they can still send us the checks, we do have our supervisors here opening mail every day. Using the proper protection, but using, opening their mail. Pennsylvania sunshine law has been amended, thanks to the senate and the representatives. I did get that from both Representative Bob Freeman and Senator Bascola, that allows now for two way technology to allow the public to participate in city council meetings. Therefore, if a meeting of city council or one of our authorities, boards, and commissions has to be held, we will do it basically the same as we're doing today. All city sponsored sporting events, practices, et cetera, have been postponed, probably through the month of May. All of our special events up, but for the winter market, although the winter market may move to Scott Park. GEDP is contemplating that move, where there's more room and to spread them out. All traffic violations from this point forward to at least the end of May, April, and then we'll look at it for the month of May, have been waived. However, safety hazards such as parking in an intersection, blocking a driveway, parking in a handicap spot, those will be and will continue to be given. They are not waived by this executive order. Expired vehicle registrations and expend, and extensions, inspections will be extended for at least thirty days after the governor Wolf reopens the economy. A lot of these garages where you would get inspections are all, are already closed, they have already decided to close their business. So we don't, so if Governor Wolf opens up the economy on May first, we want to give you at least the month of May to get those inspections and registrations. That may be extended, we'll, we'll play that by ear. Booting of cars has been curtailed through April thirtieth. Citations, late fees, and penalties will be extended to April thirtieth also, and they'll be reviewed and possibly extended at that time. Our street sweeping program, which has helped to maintain this, the cleanliness of our neighborhoods, will start now on June first instead of April first. Collection of bulk, curb side collection of bulk items is canceled until further than notice, and daily rates in both city garages have been waived through the month of April. We're evaluating our financial position daily, and we'll develop a plan to come out of this as whole as possible. But to do that, we must also make sure our small businesses come back as well. Before I get to small businesses and introduce the person that will talk about that, you know, one of the things we've taken a lot of pride in is not just not raising taxes or fees for our residents, but also building our rainy day fund. Wow, we have a thunderstorm ahead of us. So this may be a year where we ask city council to tap into that rainy day fund to borrow some money from it. But it's very important, right now, our rainy day fund is a little over five million dollars. It's very important to have that rainy day fund, we certainly don't want to use all of it, and we certainly don't want our rating agencies to see that we've dwindled our rainy day fund, our reserves, to less than what they should be. But I'm going to be introducing John Kingsley. We're working right now with the county, the state and federal officials and their business programs, like the paycheck protection program and a small business loan program. I'm very proud of our local city groups that have come together to do a local program as well. We have the GEDP, Eastern Area Industrial Labor Division, Industrial Land Division. We have the city of Easton, we have post management, we have three banks, including Wells Fargo, People's Security, and Univest, working with us to create a loan program to help our businesses get back and, and maintain themselves during this period of time. So at this time, I'd like to introduce John Kingsley, our director of Department of Community and Economic Development, to give you some information for all the small businesses listening, and I know many are because they called me earlier today. So John, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Thanks, Mayor. First and foremost, I just want to let everyone know that the city has been working to help businesses primarily to avail themselves of the information they need to weather the impact of the coronavirus. And to that end, the department has developed an online toolkit, which is located on the department site. You can get to this resource page very easily by going to the city's website and clicking on the COVID nineteen business assistance banner, which is on the city's main page. You can also access it through the Department of Community and Economic Development's page as well. This webpage provides access to a number of things, including information on the various federal, state, and local financing programs that are available to assist companies. It also includes technical assistance organizations that can assist with business issues, related technical guides, access to related events like webinars and virtual conferences, and also provides access to news. And we are trying to update this information very regularly, in fact, I get to it at least twice a day. The city is also working with our partners, including the North Hampton County Department of Community and Economic Development, the Greater Easton Development Partnership, to provide access to additional resources, including city and regional financing programs and informational events. Last week, the county held a virtual town hall, which we helped to develop and coordinate. We had approximately three hundred local business people online with us. These policymakers from all levels of government, representing the county, provided input on the work that is being done to support small businesses. We'll be following this up with another event in a few weeks, which will be a business roundtable with experts from a number of professional disciplines to discuss the myriad of issues that we know our local businesses are facing as a result of the coronavirus, and to offer best practices in how to address those issues. As it relates to financing resources, and as the mayor mentioned, the city is partnering with the Greater Easton Development Partnership and the Eastern Area Industrial Land Developers to offer a no interest working capital loan to assist local businesses with covering staff and overhead expenses. We hope to raise approximately three hundred thousand dollars for this fund, and we're, we're almost two, we're actually above two thirds of the way there. This program will go live this evening and will provide up to ten thousand dollars of agile capital at no interest with payments deferred for six months, and then the principal amortized over a one year period. The application and underwriting for this program has been streamlined to allow funds to get to our small businesses quickly. Applications will be open until the end of the week. Just a word of advice to anyone considering the program, please get your application in quickly. We do expect this to be, there to be high demand for the program, and it likely will be oversubscribed, I'm sorry to say. In addition to our work on the city's relief program, we also providing technical assistance in helping our businesses access the two main relief programs, which are those provided by the SBA. Just to provide a quick overview of these programs, the Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program provides loans directly through the SBA portal at sba.gov, and may be used to pay fixed debts, payroll, accounts payable, and other bills that can't be paid because of the disaster's impact. The interest rate is three point seven five percent for small businesses, and two point seven five percent for nonprofits. Program can provide up to two million dollars in the form of working capital and does have a grant component associated, which is ten thousand dollars that's available in the form of an advance. The terms for the loan are determined on a case by case basis, and we can help you understand more about this. If you need any help, there's more information on our website. The Paycheck Protection Program is the other SBA offering, and this is the one that has been fortified with two hundred and, I believe it's three hundred and fifty billion dollars from the CARES Act. It is designed to provide a direct incentive for small businesses to keep their workers on the payroll. The program is available through SBA certified lenders, including many of the banks represented in the Greater Eastern area. Loan amount is calculated at two point five times the business's average payroll expense from the previous year, and the proceeds can be used for payroll, rent, mortgage interest, or utilities. SBA actually will forgive these loans if all employees are kept on payroll for eight weeks and the least, at least seventy five percent of the money is used for payroll purposes. Loan payments, should this become a loan or deferred for six months, no collateral or personal guarantees are required. And a number of other accommodations are made, including the lenders are not allowed to charge fees for the program. If businesses have laid off employees, forgiveness can still be available, and I know this is a big question as it relates to the program. If you're willing to rehire those employees quickly and maintain salary levels, forgiveness can be offered even in those instances. So it's something to give further consideration to on that end. The loan, if it is again turned into a loan, has a maturity of two years and an interest rate of one percent. More information on both of the SBA programs is provided for on our website, along with a number of other state and local resources that I know businesses will want to consider, and we are updating again that information daily. What we want city businesses to know is we're here to help them. If you have any questions on any of these programs, or your business needs additional assistance outside of the things that are highlighted in, on the website, or in the programs that are contained therein, please feel free to contact me. For some reason, I cannot provide direct assistance, I have a vast network of professionals I've worked with most of my career that I know can help, and I'm always happy to provide that assistance. I think that finishes my remarks, and I'll turn this back over to the mayor.
Thank you, John, would you give them a phone number that they can call? I realize that the best place is the sba.gov website, but if they need local help for the local businesses from the city, what is the number they can call?
So my direct line is six one zero two five zero six seven one nine, and that, that because of our phone system actually ultimately connects to my cellphone where necessary.
Okay, very good, so it's six one zero two five zero six seven one nine. Before I introduce our city administrator, I would like to say that for the businesses who are on, that are still working as essential businesses, Dr. Levine, from the department, the secretary of Department of Health or Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, did issue guidelines for those businesses as far as cleanliness and sanitizing their businesses. So I would suggest that you go to the Pennsylvania Department of Health website as well, where you'll find that. But also, they announced, the state announced, in addition to that, a depression slash anxiety slash just wants somebody to talk to hotline, and that is eight two five two eight four two four nine four, and I'll make sure that these are up on our website tomorrow. But Stephen's on the line, so I'd like to turn it over to Stephen before I get to Louis, just to give us an update, Stephen. On, in spite of all the problems we're having and challenges with coronavirus, we also have a census going on, can you give us an update on census? If we can unmute him. Okay, we'll come back to him. Just also want to remind you that primary election day in Pennsylvania has been moved to June second, but that's a tentative date that the governor has placed us on, so next, Stephen, you want to give us an update on census? No, still don't have him? Okay, he's on, but we didn't unmute him. So we'll work on that. Louis Campos is the city administrator, has been serving here for a little over three years now, right Louis? Four, four years, wow, time goes by when you're having fun.
All right, Mayor, I'm gonna piggyback off of the, our city council meeting two weeks ago. And just to summarize the talking points that I gave to council then, and this is a little bit different of a forum, not, not being a, a full council meeting. I do want to, I think it makes sense to summarize initially what I had discussed to council, and then it just makes more sense, I'm only going to take about a couple minutes here. Firstly, since the disaster declaration that the mayor had issued, the administration began to mobilize fairly quickly. And to that extent, we took safety precautions as our, one of our first moves to ensure that the city workforce was appropriately distancing themselves in an effort to keep the contagion of the virus at least siloed, if you will, if it did affect like a certain shift. And we did that, I think it was the, the Monday, it was at March twenty third, and we approximately ran at fifty percent our levels in the morning shift and the afternoon shift for a period of two weeks. In that time period, we had presented to council, because we, we started to, at least anecdotally through the community, see that the, the effect of not only the governor, not only the, the mayor's disaster resolution, but also the governor's disaster declaration was that certain businesses were, were being shut down. And to that extent, finance started to model out what the potential impact. We started to look at a five percent impact almost immediately as an initial threshold. Since then, we've updated our forecasts, and Mayor, we have presented them Since then, we've updated our forecasts, and Mayor, we have presented them to you and to council, in which you have publicly stated that there is the potential of being a 17-plus percent impact or just north of $5 million on our overall budget. And while certainly that's true, I do want to preface that that's a constantly moving target, particularly since we don't know what the actual impact is going to be. The only thing that we can really manage is the, the local businesses or understand that the local, certain local businesses are certainly are not operating, and to that extent, some, many of them are just closed right now. So we know what the potential impact is on a month-to-month basis. Let me go over a few of the items that we have been doing operationally for the last several weeks now, including this week. We're having daily management status calls to review operational issues and ensure that public safety and key services continue to function without disruption. The management team is having weekly calls with the cities of Bethlehem, Redding, Lancaster, and York, and Harrisburg to review and question each other's various impacts and strategies on how they're going to handle the current situation. Under the City of Easton's Emergency Preparedness Plan, the administration has enacted an emergency operations center committee. The committee has met, and we've discussed roles in the case that City Hall is compromised for whatever reason that may be. As I noted, we began and continue to review detailed budgetary models in which we're predicting what the potential months may look like. Currently, as I noted, we are experiencing about a 17% shortfall in revenue. The difficult part of understanding what the shortfall is going to be, especially now, is that many of these indicators are lagging. And budget reports, at least when we go to council at the next council meeting, it may be perhaps even in May, we may have lagging indicators that we, that we may not realize the full impact until a couple of months from now. Certainly, there are several areas of concern, Mayor, which you have mentioned them, the amusement tax, parking, earned income tax, and business privilege tax, just to name a few of the line items. Mayor, as you had mentioned, on March 23rd, excuse me, on April 6th, that's yesterday, we furloughed about 81 employees or about 30% of the workforce. Really, there is two reasons, main reasons for that. Number one, we, we understood the budgetary impact and we had to make an immediate decision. And number two, really, the, the economy in our, the city has slowed down significantly in terms of the visitors coming into town as one point. So the decision was made to furlough employees. Those furloughed employees were sent home, but we, the city is maintaining their healthcare benefits through anyway the end of the furlough period or as federal legislation provides through July 1st, if need be, if, if these individuals have to stay furloughed for that long. Financially, now, the city is responsible for the total cost of the employment benefit. So I do want to make sure that we understand that while these individuals are furloughed because the city's self-insured status for unemployment, the city is bearing the cost for, for all of the unemployment benefit that the individuals are receiving during this furlough period. Now, the main departments that have been affected, as you had mentioned, not all departments were affected, but two in particular, the Department of Public Works and Code took the hardest hit. Now, within these departments, we are running skeleton crews, and the administration is ready to reissue full-time employment in the case of an emergency. So may I just preface, Mayor, that while, and we've spoke with the union, while these individuals are in a furlough status, they understand that they could be called back in an emergency situation. And to my point prior, the management team is now meeting on a daily basis, and we are potentially identifying, and we do have the mindset, because this was the initial idea when we furloughed these folks, was that there could be the potential of a recall on some individuals as early as next week. So this is a moving target, we're watching this on a week-to-week basis. However, I do want to note that the majority of these individuals most likely will not return by the end of April, and this would, would then go into May of some time, just to give you some perspective on how the, the management team is thinking here. Now, as we look at the overall budget model, and we look at the size of, of the economy here and the size of government, the administration has not ruled off permanent layoffs, but will exercise all options in order to thwart any type of layoff that may impact individuals. And that is then, some of these are, continue to look at cost reductions, potentially restructure current debt, there's an opportunity potentially to obtain some gap financing, we're gonna look at adjusting timing on, on our capital projects, and potentially then also expedite retirements through incentives. And we had done that going into this year already, not knowing what, what we were going to head into with the current crisis. One thing I do want to note here, uniform personnel have not been affected by the furlough, and to that extent, call volume right now is low. That's a, that's a positive indicator, at least for our uniform personnel. Mayor, I, I do want to take a quick note and thank you specifically. Last week, there was a, the potential of one of our firefighters was feeling ill and had symptoms that were similar to the, to COVID-19, the individual's having headaches, he was feeling achy, et cetera. The individual, the firefighter, did not report to work that day, he was off for a couple days, which is customary over in the, in the fire department with the, with the shift schedules that they're on. The chief, Chief Krill acted appropriately, made a call to me, I called you, Mayor. Within one day, the individual not only got tested, but 24 hours after the, the test, the individual received a negative, a negative result on, on his test for COVID-19. Mayor, I want to, I want to thank you because you went ahead and called the CEO of Eastern Hospital, informed the CEO that we had a first responder, and it was critical that we find out if this individual would test positive or negative for that matter. And Mayor, your actions and the actions of the CEO delivered a quick response, so I do want to thank you for that, and it helped alleviate a lot of the concerns over at the firehouse, especially these individuals who are living in, in close quarters at 24 hours at a time. A couple other bullet points, during this time period, we are increasing our communication to the public on affected services. We have put together an e-newsletter, and we've increased our presence on social media. And the administration is right now having open discussions with union leaderships on various labor relations issues, including updates to employment and contract negotiations. Mayor, that's my update. I know the directors are on the call, we can dive a little bit deeper for the public here if they have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And Stephen Narowski has come, he's our Director of Codes and Planning, but we also gave him the dutiful task of making our Census 2020 at least as close to accurate as we can. So Stephen, you want to give us an update on that?
Sure, so, you know, in light of the COVID-19 pandemic, the U.S. Census Bureau had adjusted their operations to protect the health, safety, and welfare of everyone involved from the enumerators or the census takers and the public, so they had shifted timelines on when there'd be greater interaction. So currently, they've been postponed until April 15th before any field operations will resume. With that, though, you could still respond online at 2020census.gov, so 2020census.gov, and then you could respond there whether you've received your mailer or not. There are nine questions, and you could go through it online, it's relatively simple. I did it for my household in a matter of minutes, so it's not so bad.
Literally five.
Alternatively, you could call, it is 844-330-2020. Although all the deadlines for these operations have been shifted and moved to accommodate, you know, slowing the spread, it is anticipated that everything will be collected and delivered to the president by December 31st as required. The city's operations have slowed down dramatically on our outreach. We still have our signs out, our flyers out, but some of our marketing tactics have been on hold because of, you know, the, the requirements involved with being out in the public to, to do those. But, but we are still putting out online information, and we're available here at City Hall to answer any questions anyone has.
Thank you, Mr. Narowski. Before I open up for any questions that we might have, we have one, I want to thank the Eastern Area Industrial Land Developers, EAILD as I refer to. For those of you that don't know the history of this group, this is the group of local business leaders and Chamber of Commerce leaders that got together probably 70, 50, 70 years ago and bought land in the suburbs to make sure that our economy was strong in the region and started the Palmer Township Industrial Park, and then ultimately went to Forks Township, started Forks Township Industrial Park, and obviously, those industrial parks are built out. So the amount, the dollars that they have left in their account are geared, they changed their mission to helping the city and, and any businesses in the city, and they've done some projects in the past. I want to thank them for their participation and looking inward again. When it was time to look outward and create jobs in the townships for all of our residents, it was important. I also want to implore, and I'm probably, I know I'm preaching to the choir, because people who are on the call are probably some of the people I saw within the last couple days who are asking me why, you know, why these people don't practice social distancing. I want to implore you to, to really practice social distancing. We need, right now, more than ever, we need people to stay away from one another, to wear your masks in public, to wear your gloves. When you have to go to the grocery store for groceries, protect yourself and others. You know, the mask that you wear is not for yourself, but it's to protect other people from catching any coronavirus, the virus that you have and spewing on them just in normal conversation. So we want to make sure social distancing is maintained throughout the city. I do know that the restaurants, my wife and I have been frequenting the curbside restaurants, they are doing a very good job of maintaining social distance, and I really appreciate that. They're not handling cash, they're only taking debit or credit cards, and you're usually giving it over, over the phone, so you don't even have to give it to you when you get there. Nobody's touching your credit card and getting it back in your pocket. So I want to, want to thank everyone who is practicing social distancing, but don't be afraid just to mention something, hey, you know, you really should stay six feet apart. Same way on our hiking, you know, biking and walking trails, please, they're open for now. I don't want to have to close them, but I will if it's not, if we're not practicing social distancing. I don't have a lot of leadway, this is really, you know, when you keep looking for a daily update from the mayor, normally, in an up, in a natural crisis, like a hurricane or a flood or a windstorm like we had with any of the big, Hurricane Sandy was my biggest one, the, the most recent one, this is really statewide and of course, federal. And the governor is the one who has the much more authority than the mayor to make those decisions. So I can't require people to do that. I know there are some cities that are offering, that are putting in effect a curfew. I don't know what, what impact a curfew after eight o'clock has if, if you're out all day long touching people and talking to people. So when you're using our facilities, the playgrounds are closed, I hated to do that, but you know, and I can appreciate people saying, what am I gonna do with my kids? You're supposed to be training them to be doing schoolwork, and even if it's just reading, I don't care if they just read and practice their math. Reading, writing, and arithmetic is still really important to us. So I appreciate all the people that are practicing social distancing, but I will remind you that the social distancing is the only way, especially for the next two weeks, that we're going to curb this virus. Go to our first phone call. Want to give your name and address? Who is it?
Hi, my name is Jordan Childers, my address is 338 North 11th Street. I was wondering, so as of today, the number of positive coronavirus cases in the Lehigh Valley has reached about 1,800. That number's going to continue to grow, and I've wondered if, if you as the city have identified spaces to act as overflow facilities for hospitals and morgues, should this number continue to rise and overwhelm our healthcare infrastructure?
Yes, we have. We have identified and working with the healthcare providers. They have not been needed yet. If you saw on Anthony Iannelli's Business Matters last night, he had both CEOs from St. Luke's and from Lehigh Valley Hospital Network, they're both feel that they're, they're prepared for the surge that will come this week and next, but and Eastern Hospital, it does still have room, and Eastern Hospital, very frankly, could become a COVID-19 facility if need be. The state has agreed to keep it open for us, and it's, it's one of those, it's in the times like this that the community hospitals are so important. But that is about 180-bed hospital, and there's only about 49 people in there at the present time, seven of which I believe, I haven't had an update today, are COVID-19 patients. But you're absolutely right, but we have identified not only places for health if they are sick, but also those that need to be quarantined. We work with the college, Lafayette College, and have a place up there if there's a need for quarantined people who may not be exhibiting any of the signs or symptoms of COVID-19, but certainly has been tested positive. So yes, you're absolutely right. Good point.
Thank you.
Just checking our screen. This is technology, I want to thank Frank Kruse or IT Department, doesn't seem like we have any other people who've, want to ask a question, just press asterisk, asterisk, press the asterisk button twice, and we do have another one. If you want to speak, that, that raises your hand on our computer, and we can see it, and we'll go live. Are we live now? Okay, caller, you could give us your name and address, please.
Hi, this is Jordan Childers again, I'm, I might be the only one, only resident on the call. Have, has the city attempted to organize groups of volunteers to sew face masks for healthcare workers and/or citizens alike as per CDC and WHO guidelines?
We have a number of people and businesses in the city, both individuals and businesses who are, who are making masks and hand sanitizer, and we're letting people know and letting them know where they can send them to, who needs them the most. Right now, our fire and our police department are supplied to the extent that they need be, but should that become a problem, we know that Mercantile Home, Armin Elliott, who's a photographer, is doing some sewing now down at the photography studio, Elaine Zelker is doing masks instead of photography, Kaplan's Awnings is doing masks, so we, we do have the masks being done. Obviously, they're not the N95 masks that are needed by healthcare providers, but they're masks that everybody can use. I would use, go to any one of those places if someone needs them, and that's where we're directing them. Hand sanitizer's being made by our, our local distilleries, Country C Spirits and Eight Oaks, and someone else is making hand sanitizer, I can't remember. But we are trying to keep our PPE. When I was in, when I was Vice President of Coordinated Health Systems, I thought I was the only person who knew what PPE was, but now everybody knows it. So the personal protective equipment is really important, and wearing a mask outside is really important, and, and people should be doing that.
Has there been any kind of like official citywide call for, for volunteers to do that?
I put it on Facebook, and people are responding. Kaplan's, Randy and David called me up and told me they were going to do this, and they would provide them to anyone who needed them. So when we get like Eastern Emergency Squad or somebody, if they would call us, we would direct them to them. But it's really important, so hopefully, people are using them, and even if it's just a bandana they're putting around their mouth.
And if, if it's okay, I have one more question that I'd like to-
Sure, go ahead. Sure, go ahead.
Have, has the city attempted to organize any kind of, like, welfare checks for the senior citizens in the area that might not be able to leave their homes in order to get the supplies and the resources that they need to participate properly in social distancing?
We're asking everybody to check on their neighbors, their elderly neighbors and family members. Hopefully, they're doing that. We have not started to do that yet. We are in contact, our fire department is in contact with a number of organizations. So are our police, but we have not organized it to the extent that you might be asking, but it's an excellent point. And I'm going to make, I'm going to make note of that. Thank you. We're looking to see if anyone else raised their hand. While we're waiting for Mark to see if there's anyone else raising their hand, I will tell you that this has brought out a number of things for our less fortunate. Believe it or not, portlets are going to be very important in our downtown central business district. We've made arrangements to put, our homeless shelter Safe Harbor is not open to walk-in resident, walk-in people right now. And most of our restaurants and public restrooms, like at the bus terminal, they're all closed. So there's no place to take care of your bathroom needs. So we are going to be putting portlets, working with County Executive Lamont McClure and County Emergency Money. We're going to put portlets at Safe Harbor and down around the Scott Park area. And also, one other location, I might be pulling a blank on that. Scott Park. I'll find it in a second because I just got an email on it. But there's going to be three locations. We'll make sure everybody knows where they're at. The third location is the Scott Park Boat Ramp around that area. The... No, we're not putting them there. I'm waiting for my email to, my internet is a little slower today. Go ahead. Oh, David. Okay, the phone number to call in is four eight four three five nine zero three zero four. But the PIN number is not the PIN number that's on your screen. It is eight seven zero eight six one. So the phone number is four eight four three five nine zero three zero four. PIN number eight seven zero eight six one. Technical difficulties with this new system? Oh. Oh, I can't bring up that. Sorry for the law and the action, and the silence is deafening, but this is a relatively new way of conducting a virtual. I was actually, I was going to have my town hall meetings the month of April, where I go into the various neighborhoods and bring all the directors with me and answer any questions you may have or comments and concerns. We'll do that later in the summer, but hopefully this is over and we can get back to that. But we will schedule them again, and hopefully this doesn't last longer than another couple of weeks. Louis, did you have something? Oh, I thought you did. Okay. Remind you about going online to complete your census, so enumerators don't have to come to your house, but you can call, you can go online. The other location is the Canal Park Parking Area, which is right along Six Eleven South. So it's Safe Harbor's parking lot, the boat launch area of Scott Park along Larry Holmes Drive, and Delaware Canal Park, which is on the other side of the river. We tried to get locations where people might be, but that, there are three locations so far. There's one other one? Okay, two, two questions or comments. Go ahead, caller. Are you there, caller? Try the other one. Is there a caller on the phone?
Yes, Melissa Saris.
Hi, Melissa.
Hello, I'm Melissa Saris, seven thirty High Street, Easton, PA. And just on behalf of Lafayette College, with the small business programming that's been going on in collaboration with EAILD as well as GEDP in the city, are you aware of any other type of nonprofit community partners that might be in need of different help? Recognizing there's a lot of federal programs going on, United Way and the Community Foundation are doing some things. But have, if you've come across any community partners within Easton seeking specific material supplies, volunteers that you can share?
Melissa, you know, I have not received many calls from anyone else. Ninety-nine percent of my calls so far in the last two weeks have been from small businesses who have been shuttered, and how they're going to reopen and how they're going to pay their bills while they're closed, and from people who are out of work. But the college has always been one of my resources, like they were with GEDP, with that collaborative effort. And we appreciate the college's involvement in that. But as of right now, I don't know of any, many of our food banks are closed, so the school district is now working with Nancy Walters and her group. I do know that people like Dr. Stan and Judy Walker, they're now doing free pizza giveaways one day a week from one of the downtown pizza shops for the less fortunate. So there is a lot of things going on that I don't even know about, but I'll certainly always keep the college in mind.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Thanks for all your help with the city. Appreciate it. We have another caller. Caller, give us your name and address. Morning call. Christina? Nope, it's not coming up. So while we're waiting, I'll give you that number again. It's four eight four three five nine zero three zero four. And when prompted for the PIN number, it's eight seven zero eight six one. And you can ask us any questions, comments, concerns. I do want to give that anxiety, depression hotline again from the Department of Health. It's eight two five two eight four two four nine four. You know, these are serious times, and people out of work get a little, there's a lot of stress out there right now, a lot of anxiety and depression. We've read about some of the extreme cases in the paper, but certainly if you're in need of help, eight two five two eight four two four nine four would be a great resource that you could call. We have a caller on the line?
Hey, Mayor, my name's Eric Stern. I'm actually calling from the same address as Jordan, who was talking earlier.
Okay.
So I wanted to say two things because I was listening, and I had an idea to throw out there. But I also wanted to say, yesterday I took my dog for WALK, and I can't say it because it's crazy.
I know that.
Two kids who were heading into the park down the street, and within a span of maybe two minutes, I mean, they didn't have masks or anything, they were going past where it had been roped off. Police officers were there and got them right out of the park. I was amazed at how quickly they took care of that. So I wanted to give props to them for doing what needs to be done right now, which I cannot imagine is fun.
No, I'm sure it's not.
The idea that I had that I wanted to throw out, I've been reading news from all over the place, especially Italy, Spain, and the UK are getting hammered right now really hard. And one of the things that they've done with success to make up for the lack of ventilators and PPE is they have reached out to anybody in their particular areas or nations or what have you that have 3D printers. And people are using their 3D printers to actually create face masks and PPEs to supplement hospitals, storehouses, and supplies. I wanted to know if we have considered doing anything like that. Surely, people around here must have 3D printers, and I'd be willing to bet a good chunk of them would be willing to help out with any shortages we have right now.
Well, I could tell you that in addition to the people I mentioned, Taylor made nail polish, the new nail polish salon on North Haven Street that's making their own color, that you pick out your own color and they make it. They're now making hand sanitizers and 3D Reactions, I think they're called. 3D Reactions is a local company as well as the college that has offered their 3D printers. 3D Reactions is definitely making face masks already. So I should have mentioned it, but I thank you for calling, Eric, and letting me, giving me a reminder, because that is really, it's amazing. You know, I'm very proud of our citizens and being the mayor, because whenever we ask, they're there. They're responding, and it's cooperative effort that's really going to get us through this. We're talking to a number of mayors around the region, both townships, boroughs, and city mayors. And it's interesting, I'm also in communication with the mayor from my ancestral village in Santo Stefano in Sicily, and it's really scary, and that's really what was my eye-opener, what's happening over in Italy and now Spain. And I'm really watching what Singapore has done, since they've controlled and flattened the curve so well. I think we could take real good advice of the social distancing.
Yeah, absolutely. I have one other question. I'm sorry to hit you with another one here. Is there anywhere on the city website that could be updated and just recommend to people, hey, if you at home are, like, we're going to be doing, we have a sewing machine coming on Friday, and we want to start making cloth masks and just donating them. Anywhere that could use them, I imagine especially our poor and our homeless people are going to need help getting those. So any kind of information for us residents, where to donate food that really needs it right now, for anybody who wants to help out our neighbors and our community?
That's great, Eric. I mean, I would, obviously, the most places that really could use it, of course, are Safe Harbor, Third Street Alliance, places like the other, like St. Anthony's, Eastern Area Community Center, and Boys and Girls, they're all closed. So it's really, that's one of our difficulties in distribution, is that the places that would normally be able to distribute it to those people, they're not even open. And they need it the most, so I would gladly, if you call my office, it's six one zero two five zero six six one zero. I'll gladly put you in touch with someone when the time comes, if you have that, it's great. I mean, we've done that with other people that are doing it in the community, and right now, we're just not getting a need. But after today's call, maybe, maybe we'll have a lot of people calling tomorrow at the City Hall saying, I need, we need masks. And now we would, I would definitely give you a call.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor. I'm going to do that. I'll call tomorrow, and we'll figure out where we can donate anything that's needed.
That's great. Thank you. I know that places like downtown restaurants, I don't want to name them because there's probably all of them are doing it, but I know of at least three that are sending out, making food and sending it to the hospitals, like, a different hospital every other day. I know people that are sending it out, letting, like I said, the pizza. Somebody made fun of me on Facebook about, oh, big deal, all he talked about was a pizza giveaway. Well, to a person who doesn't have any food that day, that slice of pizza is really, really something nourishing for them. It covers all the major groups, dairy and protein and carbs, so. I don't mean to make light of it, because the Project Hope is, when we do that, when I don't, when the committee does that in the holiday season, they have over seven hundred people at the Our Lady of Lebanon Church. And they feed, not only feed them a meal, but also gifts for the kids, clothes for the parents, grocery, bags of groceries to go home. And now they're coming about volunteering and raising money to provide slices of pizza to people during the day, once a week. So I wouldn't make light of that. I think if somebody's hungry, they're going to know it. And we watch the national news, and we hear people referring to this as our Pearl Harbor. And we could, the difference is that we couldn't control that as much as we can control this virus. If we really want to flatten the curve, we've got to listen to social distancing. And the doctors like Dr. Fauci, he's my new hero. He's very smart, and he's done a great job of telling us every night of what we should be doing.
Lehigh Valley Live is trying to call in right now. Do you have him? Okay.
Okay, Lehigh Valley Live is on also. Kurt?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, it's Kurt from the Express Times, Lehigh Valley Live. How are you?
Yes, very good, Kurt. How about yourself?
Good, thanks. I have a couple of questions, actually. Do you know how many positive cases we have currently in Easton?
Mayor, we can defer that to the fire chief. I don't...
Yeah, I was just going to say, I don't, we unfortunately only have county-wide statistics, but I only know of two in the city.
We don't have the chief talk a little bit about those.
Chief Krill, are you on the line? I know he was on the line. Unmute the chief, and we'll talk directly to Chief Krill.
Maybe he's in there.
You got it? You got Chief Krill on the line?
Hello?
Okay, Kurt, you can talk right to chief.
Hi, Chief Krill?
Yes.
Hi, this is Kurt from the Express Times, Lehigh Valley Live. I was just wondering if you know how many positive cases we've had so far in Easton?
I, it, we, the county does not break it down by municipality, but we do have the county count as of twelve hundred hours today. It was seven hundred and forty-four cases, that's up fifty-eight. And right now, the casualties are fourteen, and that's up two.
Okay, got it. Thank you. This is a question for the mayor to follow up. I think about a week and a half ago or so, you had told me that the city was going to be doing an inventory of your PPE. Do you have an update as the world thing stands in terms of whether you have...
Well, we still, Chief, we're on mute, Chief Krill. Chief Krill can talk about the fire department.
Okay.
Okay, Kurt, can you hear me?
Yep, he can hear you.
Okay. We've been doing a lot of things with PPE. We started back in January, January twenty-seventh, in fact, starting to upgrade our protocols for COVID virus way back in January. And as a result, we started immediately trying to obtain a supply of equipment to get us through this period, although at the time, we didn't know how long that was going to be. So we did start to build equipment, but very quickly, the supply chain fell apart. And we had some difficulties getting some things. We've had generous donations from Lafayette College, from the Boston Brewing Company, Sam Adams, and Fogelsville. And that has greatly helped our supplies. We are at an adequate level for this time. We're also being careful that we don't stockpile too much, because there's so much need throughout the valley. We want to make sure that we have the correct amount of PPE. But we, as far as the fire department and the police department, we're holding our own. We have set up some, some protocols also for disinfection of our stations and our vehicles, because that's also a concern for us. We, our, our ability to keep our facilities clean is lowering the risk for us. And so far, as the mayor had mentioned, we had one scare, and that turned out to be negative, but we've, we're trying to keep our risk very low. And so far, we've been successful. Our absentee rate is extremely low. It's approximately what it normally would be at this time of the year. Our personnel are very enthusiastic, and we're trying to be innovative in what we do here. I mean, we, today, our project was, we were making face shields. We had an individual that 3D printed the headbands, and we found some materials here in offices that we could make face shields for them, and we completed that task. We're now going to attempt to make some more. We're limited a little bit by the time it takes to 3D print, but we're going to make some for the police department, and we've had some requests from other departments to help them out and try to provide some... from other departments to help them out and try to provide some face shields also for EMS. So we're working on those things besides our regular duties. We're also going to produce some of our own hand sanitizer in the next few days, thanks to Sam Adams, who has provided us with some of the components to do that. So overall, we're doing pretty well, and we're just watching the amount of equipment we have. We're trying to gauge our burn rate on it and then try to project, as things change, how much additional equipment we'll need down the road.
Thank you, chief. Chief Scowzo, are you on to give us an update from the police department?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, now you're on, chief.
All right. Yeah, we're kind of in the same boat as far as PPE stuff. We have procured a lot of things. We had already stockpiled for our department, hand sanitizer, the actual disinfectant wipes and those types of things. We've contracted out with various vendors for, as of right now, the cleaning of our vehicles and our facility, and so we've been pretty good actually even going into the crisis, managing those types of things, and then we've gotten support from various vendors in the county when it comes to the masks and things to that effect. So as far as the equipment, we're trying to give our officers the best opportunity to stay as safe as we can. And obviously, we've changed and modified our patrol practices to again, put them in the safest possible situations. So so far, it's been, it's worked out well for the department. We're healthy here, and we're trying to stay that way. So far, so good.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Both chiefs, we're doing a great job of keeping our city safe. Now I want to get to a topic, and I want to remind you, if you can't get a call in, you can email me. I have my phone, SPANTO@easton-pa.gov. Let me talk about something that's not as nice to talk about, and most people don't. But you know, the city of Easton, we have a wastewater treatment plant at the top of the, north of the Delaware, that we clean, take the water out of the river, the dirty water, and clean it for you to use and abuse, and then you put it down your drain, and it goes down to our wastewater treatment plant south of the city on the Delaware. The water that we put back into that Delaware River is better than the water that we take out. But in order to do that, we have to operate our facilities. And just on Saturday, we had another two facilities, one on West Lafayette Street, one down on Busch Hill Drive, that Dave Hopkins just sent me a picture of the amount of debris that's going through our pumps and clogging them. And it's all those wipes and rags and people flushing things down their toilet that they shouldn't be. So the only thing, please, tell your friends, neighbors, and family that those wipes that say they're disposable, they're not. They are not disposable. Yes, they will break down over time, but the amount of time it takes is long before it gets to our wastewater treatment plant or one of our pumps. So please, toilet paper only. Somebody sent me an email today. Bill Walter says it's the three Ps. Poop, pee, and toilet paper. So we have someone else for a call? Go ahead, caller, name and address.
Hey, it's Michelle Merlin from the Morning Call. You said that there were two cases that you know of in the city. Is that just? I mean, that's not like a definitive number, right?
No, it's not a definitive number. It's only two that I know of that we were involved in. I have no idea because obviously HIPAA laws, I won't even tell, I can't talk about those two, but I do know that there were two at the time, and that was as of probably last Thursday or Friday, I heard about them. But I don't know of any other numbers. The only thing I get is through the Department of Health, and they're doing it countywide, as the chief said. They're not doing it by municipality.
Would you guys ever consider going through, I think there's like a national database to filter through?
Well, fortunately for us right now, we might do that in the future. Hopefully, we've already are doing things that have flattened the curve in the city. Obviously, we live in a county and a region, so we have to look at those numbers carefully. People are, you know, I always talk about the number of municipalities I travel through in a given day. So regionally is more important to me than city, since we're only four square miles. It's more important, you know, if I'm going to go out shopping with my wife and going to one of the grocery stores, they're not in the city, they're outside in another municipality. So the county numbers are good enough for us right now, unless we see them start to spike and really surge in the city, then we would try to look at something differently. But right now, Michelle, we're satisfied with the county numbers. And obviously, I know how many cases are in Easton Hospital, so that helps as well. We have another caller? Caller, you're on the line?
Hello?
Yes, go ahead. Name and address, please.
My name's Sam Morello. I'm here in Wilson, and I have a question as far as the courthouse is concerned.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now I can, a little better.
Oh, thank you. I originally had a court, there's supposed to be a court hearing this month, and I understand, you know, the courthouse is closed, it's not open to anybody. But I sent a letter into the judge with my request, without getting into detail, along with the possibility of teleconferencing. Has that been considered to handle cases that are due and should be, you know, released at that point in time, that are vital to the people that, you know, that have these cases that should be released at that point?
Well, that's a good point. I mean, obviously, the city doesn't control the county, and the county is its own entity, but I do know they do have teleconferencing with their magistrates, the district magistrates. If our police officer makes an arrest on a given night, on Saturday night, early morning, or Sunday, early morning, it's done by teleconferencing. But if you have a lawyer, I would suggest your lawyer contacted the judge, but right now, I do know that the county courthouse is closed.
Yeah, I, I'm aware of that, and unfortunately, due to the hardship that's put me into this situation, I no longer have an attorney, and I tried a public defender, but they said, because you don't have a charge that you're going to the court for, we can't defend you. So I'm in a catch-22. I have to do this on my own, and the only thing I have left is writing. So I wrote a letter to the judge, and I hope it gets to him, and we'll see what kind of response I get. But I would, you know, I would welcome teleconferencing if it would make a difference because I do have a statement that I would like to put into the record. And, you know, I didn't want to do it in length. I just wanted to get to one specific point in order to get things resolved partially, so to speak.
Okay, Sam. Hopefully, I wish you luck on your case and try to get there. I would keep looking in the news and media for the opening of the courthouse again. I do know that Mr. McClure wants to open it quickly. He may open the courthouse before we even open up City Hall, but that's where we're at. Okay. Just getting a text from Dean Young. We have about 15 minutes left on the call. If you need a distribution facility for the mask, let's discuss the most effective and safest way. I think we can organize a curbside pickup at the Boys and Girls Club. So there you go. And that's what it's all about. People listening, they hear it, and they collaborate, and we work together to solve this crisis that we're facing. One more, Kether? We have a call, please. Go ahead, name and address. Your name and address? No, there we go. Your name and address, please?
Anthony Maraschini.
Okay, Anthony.
200 North 7th Street, Easton, Pennsylvania.
Okay. Speak up a little bit more, Anthony.
Sure thing. I'll pick the phone up. I am a speaker. I'm just curious about your action plan. Should there be an outbreak in the city of Easton and how you contain that?
Well, that's a good question. Again, the governor has not given us the policing powers that we may need to do that, but I would have no problem calling the governor personally and asking him to give us policing powers to control the amount of kids that I've seen. I know they're not as vulnerable as somebody like me, but I, you know, coming downtown the other night, I saw probably almost a dozen kids riding their bikes close together. They're taking up all of Third Street, weaving through traffic and everything. They were the same skateboarders on Pine Street. I see them at the basketball courts. I see them when we're walking down the street. They're together, they're close. I don't know, you know, you can't enforce stupidity, and these people are just being stupid. They think they're not vulnerable. They think they're above getting this virus, and they're not taking the precautions that they should. So you can't legislate stupidity, but that's unfortunate. But I agree with Anthony. I also agree with what you're talking about with beer and tobacco stores. I'm still.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, too. I want you to understand, too, that's a public health issue for me outside of whatever issues I have. Otherwise, it's not the products we're selling. It's just that there's no best practices being applied in that regard at all. So if the objective is to contain the outbreak so that it doesn't spread further into the community, I just feel like we should be a little more, I don't want to use the word forceful, but specific about where we see problems.
A good point.
Is it okay if I ask some more questions?
Yes, go ahead, sure.
So I'm not a scientist. I don't pretend to be one, but I've been watching the news enough, watching people talking about this issue, and there seems to be a long-term concern. We can say we peak, but to come out from that peak too early could be detrimental in the long run as well. So there's some conversations about how we do that. I think that you're left with only some options. One is to wait for a vaccine. That's a 12 to 18-month timeline, is what I hear. There's also what would be rapid widespread testing, which I'm not sure how that exists currently. And then you're left with herd immunity. Those are your three options. Herd immunity is the one where everybody goes out and gets exposed, and then whoever gets sick, gets sick, and that's how it works, and then we can go back out and work. But I'm not sure how we as a localized community operate around these issues. And I think that one of the things that this has demonstrated, at least to me, is that we don't have the critical infrastructure necessary to communicate to everybody what we need to communicate, when we need to communicate it to them. And it's not anybody's fault. It's just something that you don't think about until this occurs. So I just was curious as to how we as a community forecast this situation into the future, knowing that those are real limitations in this outbreak, that you're going to have to wait 12 to 18 months for a vaccine, and that without widespread rapid testing, we'll never know who has been infected and who's now immune. So everybody who's not aware has to have a say inside until we can do that. Otherwise, we're all going to have to walk around and assume who gets sick, gets sick.
Well, you're making some really good points, especially with communication. We've now launched our new alert system called Eastern Alert. We're trying to get as many people on it as possible to sign on if they're not on. And we are populating it with a number of phone numbers. It's the only way we can actually communicate. And I know that both the Morning Call and the Express Times are on the phone. You know, the local newspapers just aren't being read, and it's very unfortunate. I think one of the things that happens when technology has taken over is that those forms of communication were vital, and they were really important to our community. The local little AM radio stations that just did news, weather, and sports were very important. And I don't know how the new technology works with communicating because it's one of the things we talk about constantly in City Halls. You know, it's like, if I'm going to offer at a restaurant a steak sandwich for 25 cents, but no one knows about it, I'm not going to sell any. Marketing 101 is the most important thing for cities as well, is being able to market and communicating with its residents. And if you have any ideas, we'll be more than happy to look at it because right now, we're doing all the social media that we can. We're on Instagram, Facebook, and Twitter. We're trying to get, you know, we just updated the website, but if you don't, you know, 30% of the city population doesn't have access to the internet, so.
That's sort of like my point. Like, I know you guys are doing the best you can, and I do applaud you, especially when, you know, you're doing this City Hall meeting, which has got to be complicated in its own right. And you can't ask people to come collect together to discuss these issues, so it makes it much more difficult to get a consensus. So, you know, these are the things I'm putting out there for us to discuss maybe further. I don't think we need to have answers today, but I think that they need to be addressed when it comes to this long-term issue because without a plan, we're just waiting to make a plan. So, you know, I'll raise my hand anytime you need me, Mayor. You let me know. I'm unfortunately stuck where I'm stuck at, but whatever I can do to help, I will.
Appreciate it, Anthony. Always a good member of our community, always offering your services, and I appreciate that.
Well, I appreciate all the leadership everybody's giving. It's something we're going to need in the state, so keep it up.
Thank you. Take care of you and Alice. We have another caller on the line? So we'll unmute that person. We're going to try to unmute that person. Takes a couple of clicks before we can do that. Want to thank everyone for calling in today and for participating. The numbers are almost triple of what they were a week ago, and for our virtual city council meeting. Caller, you on the phone? Give us your name and address, please. Still not there, Mark. Caller, are you there?
Hello?
Yeah, there you are. Your name and address, please?
Hi, my name is Carol Faulkner. I live at 620 Ferry Street in the West Ward.
Okay.
I have a question about, has there been any discussions with landlords in the city and the possibility of waiving tenants' rents during this period? And do we have any ban or evictions in the city at this point?
The evictions are banned. They were done by the governor. I can't ban evictions, but they can, and they did, and so did the president. So between those, they're much bigger than me, and they can do that. And so, yes, if you have a problem with that, let us know, but you shouldn't be, you shouldn't have any issues. They should not be evicting. I do know landlords that have a mortgage to pay also, and, you know, I hope Governor Wolf is working like Governor Murphy did over in New Jersey. He got 40 major lenders, including Wells Fargo, Chase Bank, and Bank of America, to forego businesses' mortgages for 90, up to 90 days. And many of our landlords, it's a business, so I hope they did the same thing so they can forego your mortgage for a couple of months as well. Not your mortgage, but your rent.
Right.
But if you have an issue with that, you give us a call. We'll see what we can do.
Well, I'm calling for others that I know. Actually, I'm a homeowner, but but I was just wondering about that, if there can be discussions with landlords in the city. I realize that the landlords have expenses too, and if everything is waived right on up to the top, to the bank, then maybe some folks can get by.
Yeah, good point. Very good point. But if you know anybody has a problem, let us know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Bye-bye.
Yes. Does it say it's Tuesday? Yeah, it says Tuesday. All right. Every, for those that, we're going to be wrapping it up now, but for those that are on the call, we're going to do this every Tuesday at the same time, at 4 o'clock. And we'll do it for 90 minutes, and we'll, the next week, we will not give a major update like we had to do today with all the things the city's doing. We'd like to answer your questions. So if you know of anyone who wants to be involved in that virtual reality, virtual town hall, we're going to do it every week on Tuesdays at 4 o'clock. So hopefully, you all are practicing your social distance. Hopefully, you're all going to be safe, stay healthy. If you do get sick, please don't infect others, but get to a doctor right away. This is not a virus that you want to get. It's not a good virus, and it's painful. So please, take care of yourself. We want you back here to enjoy the city when it's back on our feet. Have a great day. God bless.